I'm going to call the board meeting for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layla?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here.
Chalka?
Here.
We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed say no. We have an agenda. Public comments. Do we have anybody in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? We have no one? Do we have anyone on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide public comment? Claims and payments. Mr. Perry?
Good morning. This week's expenditures total $249,710.93. The larger departments, Sheriff's Department, $29,529. Maintenance, $20,257. Secondary roads, $96,907. And finally, Fund 302 for Grundy Road, $39,116. Everything looks normal.
All right, we have a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item 4A, an update from Blackhawk County Libraries by Kelly Stern. Kelly, I see we have you there. Would you like to kick it off?
Yes, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you. Your Blackhawk County librarians wanted to, if it's okay with you, provide you a quarterly update with what's going on in your Blackhawk County libraries. So today, all of our Blackhawk County libraries have either already started or about to begin their summer library programs. That's one of the things that public libraries are most well-known for, and we provide it partly because it helps to prevent the summer slide that can happen during the summer when kids are away from school. We don't want them to lose reading proficiency, so our summer reading programs help to prevent that summer slide. The Dunkerton Public Library is currently emphasizing outdoor activities. They've added outdoor furniture to their library and are looking into an outdoor theater system. The Waterloo Public Library is currently doing virtual and outdoor programs. The Rag Bri Medic tent will be in their meeting room this summer. The Janesville Public Library is about to embark on a new building project. They are closing on a new building this month and writing grants and fundraising to furnish it, and they will be providing a Rag Bri cool-off area. They have a new teen advisory board that will help select materials for youth and teens. The Laporte City Public Library is emphasizing passive or independent programs. They're also holding group programs at a nearby park, and they're providing STEM activities with the ISU Extension Office. They're also offering lunch at the library with the Police Department this summer and a book club on the go. The Evansdale Public Library is emphasizing passive programming as well, but they'll have some in-person programs as well. They are implementing a new ILS, or Integrated Library System, which is the software that provides a public catalog to the public, but also the cataloging software and everything that staff use for their job. They're looking to resume their Rambling Reader Program to local daycares and delivery to their senior housing facilities. And the Hudson Public Library recently completed their renovation project. They were only closed briefly at the onset of the pandemic, but they continue to provide curbside service and are once again allowing group gatherings. They're reassessing their current services and deciding what pandemic-related practices to keep going forward. And at the Cedar Falls Public Library, this summer, we're offering Storytime in the Park, virtual program and performances, outdoor programs in collaboration with the Cedar Valley Arboretum, the Cedar Falls Historical Society, and Sunrise Children's Zoo at the Cattle Congress. Our youth department received a STEM grant, so they're providing STEM activities, including a worm farm, which helps to teach children about composting. We also have new raised garden beds that provide hands-on opportunities for the gardening classes that our seed librarian offers, and the compost that the worms create will go into the raised garden beds. We also have a story walk being installed right now at Big Woods Lake, and that's a walk-and-read activity. There are outdoor signs that are permanently installed at the park right now, are being installed, and each sign will have two pages from a picture book so that as you walk through the trail in the park, you can also read a picture book, and that will be changed out seasonally. We'll have a grand opening later this month. And we just got new carpet. So that's your update for this quarter, and thank you very much for the opportunity to do so. You will be seeing us at your meetings if you haven't already noticed. We just want to keep up to date with what's going on in the county. Thank you.
All right.
Any questions?
Yeah, are there any questions for Kelly Stern? Okay, thank you. Item number five, project updates from department heads and elected officials. Kathy, how are you?
Good. Good morning, Board. Kathy Anflos. Wanted to update you on our construction activities. The County Bridge Crew was out on Quarry Road this...they've been there several weeks now. They'll probably be there another month. We are replacing a small bridge structure. Are you welcome to go out there at any time and see the work? Let us know, and we'll get you a hard, hot vest. East Gresham Road Bridge, that's our long, our 200-foot-long contract bridge that PCI is starting the demolition, or they're halfway through the demolition of that structure. That's in the north portion of the county. That should be going. That will be closed for probably two or three more months. And then, pleased to say, that Canfield Road will be reopening, we're hopeful, this afternoon. That's our main connection from Dubuque Road, the communities of Jessup, for example, the Dubuque Road to Highway 20 that has been closed for about five weeks now. That should be opening later this afternoon. And then Grundy Road, that work continues with PCI doing the work. Work is progressing with PCI, again, starting from the south, moving towards the north, replacing, removing the existing roadbed and then placing geogrid and then rock. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials in the boardroom? Any department heads or elected officials on Zoom that would like to provide an update? All right, item number six, a motion to approve the minutes from June 1, 2021. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The minutes are approved. Item number seven is the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Veder, motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Could you please do roll call?
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item 8A is a resolution to approve the 28E agreement between Blackhawk County and Fayette County defining the cooperation between the counties for the upcoming road resurfacing of Highway V62 be approved as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
Yeah, I sent you an email on this. This is, this is in our five-year plan. It's part of the FY22 budget. We budgeted $50,000. We have a very small part of this 14-mile-long project, but nevertheless, we are spending $50,000 on it. It is approximately 1,350 feet that we are, that is in our jurisdiction, and it will be a quote-un-place recycle followed by an overlay then, to be completed next construction season, next summer.
How long do you think that'll take, Kathy?
I think it'll probably take most of the summer. Fayette County is administering the project, so I don't know all the details, but we can certainly find those out. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item 8B is a resolution that the contract between Blackhawk County, County Social Services, and First Judicial District regarding the reimbursement of Judicial Hospital referee Diane Larson be approved as recommended by Karen Dowell, Chief Operating Officer of County Social Services.
Morning, Karen.
Morning.
Morning, Karen.
I don't know if you have any questions for me. This is just a renewal of our contract for Diane's services. For both, Blackhawk County pays 30% for coverage of substance abuse committals, and County Social Services pays 70% for the mental health and the dual committals.
And I think you mentioned in your email there was like a 1% or 1.1%.
1.1% increase.
Increase, yes. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Move to approve?
Second?
Was the county attorney going to add some language to this?
Well, I don't add language to any, any motions or resolutions. It's, it's up to the board if you wish to.
Proposed language, I should say.
But I, if there's a desire, I, I think the current language is, is probably sufficient the way it is for what we're doing here. But if you want to make clearer what the role of the county is and what the role of the, you know, of the county, of County Social Services is, I would recommend the resolution read, resolution that Blackhawk County approve the proposed contract between Blackhawk County, County Social Services, and the First Judicial District regarding the reimbursement of Ju, of the Judicial Hospitalization referee, Diane Larson, which shall not exceed $53,104.31, 30% of which is the obligation of the county.
Karen, does that accommodate your needs?
Sure.
Chris?
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
We probably need you to look more closely at many of our resolutions to make sure. Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item 8C is a resolution to approve
Thanks, Karen.
the 28E agreement between 12 Iowa counties, Allen McKee, Blackhawk, Butler, Chickasaw, Clayton, Fayette, Floyd, Grundy, Howard, Mitchell, Tama, and Winnisseeck, to create the Mental Health and Disability Service Regional Administrative Entity as described in the Iowa Code is recommended by Karen Dowell.
This is just an amended and restated 28E agreement for which Blackhawk County is already a member. As you may be aware, we are losing seven counties, the, starting July 1, and so we are just removing those seven counties from the 28E agreement. And also, there was some language that was put in the Iowa Administrative Code last year regarding adding children's behavioral health representatives on the board. So we have done that, and it is a children's education representative, a children's behavioral health provider representative, and a family member of a child who receives behavioral health services.
Motion to approve. Second? You okay with the language here?
Again, if, if you want additional language, I can, I can certainly provide some amended language. Just let me know your pleasure. I think it's sufficient the way it is. I, I would say we could clarify that the county is approving a proposed amended 28E agreement if you would like me to, to add to that.
I think we should note that it's amended because it is the reduction of the number from 19 to 12, so, at least that.
Due to state law.
Yeah, so, an amended, an amended resolution should read then, "Resolution that Blackhawk County approve the proposed amended 28E agreement between 12 Iowa counties, Allen McKee, Blackhawk, Butler, Chickasaw, Clayton, Fayette, Floyd, Grundy, Howard, Mitchell, Tama, and Winnisseeck, for a Mental Health and Disability Service Regional Administrative Entity amending a prior 28E agreement to reflect the current participating counties in the entity, and further amending the prior 28E agreement to reflect changes in Iowa law pertaining to members of the entity's governing board."
Good with the board members?
Yep.
Sure.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
I have a question, Mike, and maybe grant. Did we put in the 1%, the 1.1% increase in that resolution? Was that included in the previous one?
I did not reference the, the 1 point. Well, let me double check here.
I mean, shouldn't we actually, if we're going to get so thorough with it, that we maybe note that as well since that was part of the proposal?
I referenced the amount of the money, which would then, by its nature, reflect the increase.
Reflect, be 1.1%. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Item number 9A is a resolution that Beth Van Lengen, Financial Management Supervisor Lois Matt, Property Tax Supervisor and Scott Brown, Motor Vehicle and Operations Manager for Blackhawk County, be authorized to conduct investment and general office transactions in the absence of County Treasurer Rita M. Schmidt. It has been moved and seconded. Does anybody have any comments? Rita, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, it was just a change due to the retirement of Monica.
Yes. It has been moved and seconded. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item number 9B is a resolution that the emergency repair at Pine Crest to replace the domestic hot water heater in the amount of $10,474.23 be approved as recommended by Rory Givin, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved.
Second?
Any comments, questions? Go ahead, Dana.
Oh, I didn't know if you guys had any questions for me. I know Rory filled you in on it. We did reach out, and we received two bids for the water heater, and we went with Bergens.
Okay.
Had some motor problems also, two out there. They had to be rewound or something. Did that get taken care of?
Or on the water heater? Yes.
For that general area?
Mm-hmm.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item 9C is a motion that the reappointment of Heidi Harrington to the Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs Commission be approved effective July 1, 2021.
All move.
Second?
I think we all know Heidi, and I think she does a commendable job, so.
And I thought it was, last week, it was impressive at their meeting. That was the first time, any meetings I've been at, that actually the commission supported or did a vote and supported reenactment of her, her terms. I thought that was pretty nice.
She has moxie.
She does.
She's army.
We have a motion and a second, correct?
Correct.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Item 9D, county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19. Dr. Engmonia, I see you're online. Would you like to provide an update?
Yes, good morning, Board. I can provide a brief update. We're continuing to increase on vaccinations. Tomorrow, I will get an updated data on where we are, but overall, we are, as of last week, we were at 56%, and we'll continue to vaccinate. Right now, I, let me just give you guys the, the numbers. My apologies, I also have a sick child near me, so.
I got a question while we're waiting. The
Yeah.
figures they give on the news every night of supposedly they've given about 1.6 million shots, and we got 3.5 million shots. Where's the 1.9 million shots sitting at?
Give me one second. The, the shots that they're, the information that they're also giving on the news, it could be that they're comparing, they're pulling it from the state dashboard, and so that's going to be a little bit different from where we are overall. So right now, percentage-wise for the county, we're at 57.7% of 18 and over vaccinated. So we have about 42.3% of our remaining population that is not vaccinated. So that might be a dashboard, that might be from the state that they're pulling it, Supervisor White. I, I look at the data from what we pull here at the department, not from the state level, so there's some, some delays in the state reporting, and also, what, what we're reporting is more accurate as to what is going on at the county level. I think the state just have, has a delay with everybody when, because they're pulling everybody's data, if that helps.
No, not a bit.
So we're at 57%.
Excuse me, Supervisor?
Uh, we're at 5, we're at 57% for vaccinations.
Yes, we're at 57%. And also, I'd like to inform you all that the, the Auto Showits Foundation approved for us to do incentives, and so in about a week or so, we're going to release what those incentives are going to be for people to be vaccinated. But we will, we, we do plan on utilizing about $10,000 to incentivize vaccinations.
Any idea how we compare it to other Iowa counties?
Yes, I do have that data. Just one second.
Fifth highest?
They showed on TV the other night, we're about fourth or fifth, I think it is. But she says that's not accurate because it comes from the state.
All right, give me one second.
You're good.
So as it relates to other, so other counties, this was data that was pulled in last week, and I will also send it to you all as, in a PowerPoint. So, for example, last week, Blackhawk County was at 56%, but Lynn County was at 64, Johnson 68, Scott 50, 50.9%, Woodbury 51, Polk 63, Story 58, and I, overall Iowa, 56.9. So we're, we're doing well in comparison to the, the state, but you see Lynn, Johnson, and, and Polk are really doing way, way beyond others. And so I think that's also, I don't know, there, there's, there's more, when you have environments where people are more, I think, have that connection with the university systems such as Johnson County and Polk having more of the urban populations, we're seeing that they're definitely higher compared to, to the rest of us.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions, comments, input?
Last, I think last week Kayla asked the board about having that item continue on the agenda every week. Since we could do project updates by the department heads, I think she didn't hear back from everyone, so I didn't know if that was something to, if we want to continue. I think you responded. So did I, but leave it on.
Yeah, I would like to see it on there
Okay.
as this evolves.
Okay.
I'm, I'm most interested in the vaccination numbers.
Uh-huh.
Sure. All right, item number 10, discussion, consideration of all aspects of the American Rescue Plan funding. Mr. Perry?
All aspects.
All aspects. We got, we get all of them here.
Here we go.
Let me, I'm going to start sharing my screen here. There we go. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, to, to kick off the American Rescue Plan funds, what I want to do is I want to go through a brief slideshow, give just a kind of a, a general overview, and then kind of come up with different thoughts and, and opinions on, on how we move forward as a group, as a committee, to, to put forth ideas that we can, we can then put into action. So I don't know how in-depth we want to get on day one, rather than just setting up a structure on, on different projects that we want to talk about, different ideas that we are going to put priority for. But these, these are the things that I'm going to look for, for, for session one, and we can move forward and, and how we're going to plan for sessions, you know, two and, and into the future. So, so I'll start off with a, a slideshow here. Blackhawk County's allocation total, 25 points, just shy of 25.5 million. These dollars are pulled out of the US Treasury Porter, portal, so the qualified expenses and projects will be included on funding requests made through, made through that portal. So these funding requests can be made up to December 2024, so we don't have, we don't have to make decisions right away. We, we can definitely see what other counties are doing, get, get different ideas, put forth different solutions in, in that manner. So again, this, there's really no rush to these funds and, and making these decisions. So it's, it's nice to kind of come to the table and, and make sound, sound decisions with, with good conversation. Eligible expenses, support public health response, replace public sector revenue loss, water and sewer infrastructure, address negative economic impacts, premium pay for essential workers, and broadband infrastructure.
Now, what all would be covered under premium pay for essential workers? One example, childcare.
Yep. So I, it is further on in, in my, in my presentation, but yeah, you're exactly right. So they do pinpoint different, different sectors, and, and within that, you can actually increase someone's premium pay on top of their normal pay by $13 an hour up to $25,000 per eligible worker. So yes, that does, that does qualify. Ineligible uses, changes that reduce the net tax revenue and payments into, into any pension plans. So how, how we're going to be able to think about these are two different buckets, and that was, that was the best way I could create a bucket on that grayscale, so. So, for instance, lost, lost revenue, lost revenue and COVID costs that have already occurred, we're going to be able to, we're going to be able to qualify these expenses, or the, we're going to be able to qualify, get a, get a check back from the US Treasury, and those are already qualified reimbursements. So those are going to be dollars that aren't necessarily tied to this bill, that we can then come up with different ideas to, to put forth to the table. Any, any studies that we need done, any, I mean, those, those are just kind of offhand, offhand examples, but they, they don't have to fit this bill, and that's going to be, that's going to be important. The other bucket are expenses that do qualify under this bill. So, again, premium pay, that's, that's going to be within the bucket of expenses that qualify under the, the American Rescue Plan, and then any expenses, you know, any, any capital projects like carpet or anything, that can just be used with the money that we've, we've gathered from lost revenue. So again, those are going to be the kind of two buckets that we're going to be working through.
Would you clarify for me again, the type of studies you're talking about?
That was, there was no actual substance behind that. It was just a thought mentality of a, like, like an equity study or, or a, or a, or a pay study. We had, we had talked about that with, with HR long ago, saying that there was a, a potential need for a pay study, and, and that would be something that we'd be able to use within the, the first bucket. So there wasn't necessarily any substance behind that. It was just an example.
I think the other way to word, just the lost revenue part, is that whatever we're able, whatever amount we're able to claim in lost revenue, then becomes flexible funding for us to use on
Exactly.
projects that aren't necessarily described in the legislation.
Right, exactly. So this is going to be the calculation for the lost revenue. They've come up with a, a very easy algorithm there. The loss of revenues are just based off of the last fiscal year, the full last fiscal year before COVID, so that's going to be FY9. the last fiscal year, the full last fiscal year before COVID. So that's going to be FY19, and that is going to be our base year. And then we're going to go with the growth adjustment from there on. They came out with a calculator that was dispersed yesterday, so we're going to be working through that to gather what our lost revenues are really going to be for FY20, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. So again, we're going to be able to claim those dollars as we move forward throughout these years. So I'm going to get into a little bit of each breakdown of the eligible expenses. Water and sewer infrastructure, clearly, this is a little bit more geared towards cities. However, we have a little bit, or we have opportunities with the Washburn Sewer. We do need to dredge that Washburn Lagoon out there. That is going to be, that was on Ben's five-year plan a while back. There's a few pumps that need to be updated, and then potential for backup generators out there. So when we talk about the sewer infrastructure, you know, really, we're kind of in that Washburn Sewer area. And speaking with Mike and Nikki in conservation, there are some opportunities for the Hickory Hills Park Lagoon as well. And then failing that sewer infrastructure, that does have a deadline of three-point-five years from now. So again, those are going to be kind of the low-hanging fruit that we're going to be able to really kind of take care of quickly.
So to go back on this, Washburn Sewer, we've had other neighborhoods and that type of thing with water problems and issues. And over the years, they've kind of talked to us about, you know, what we could do. So I would assume maybe they would also qualify under something like that.
Essentially, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
What other neighborhoods?
Oh, I'd have to go back and get the names of ones we've had. But I just thought, I don't want to put some out there. I was trying to think, Morrow Heights, I'm not even sure, Kathy, if you remember some of the names of those, was Morrow Heights in one of those?
Cedar Terrace area out there, they had floods.
I'm just trying to think of some of those. What others, Washburn, we've worked with.
There's a small section out there.
So a lot of this has to do with, if this infrastructure were to fail, then there would be some water pollution. A lot of that comes into play, and that's exactly where it comes from as far as the sewer side of things. If we get more specific ideas, then we can try to kind of fit that into this box and see what we can come up with.
I had a question on the Washburn. It's important projects there, but that's not county tax dollars out there. So
You're right.
That's private fees that are being used to operate that and sustain it.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, but that is
Well, let's put it this way, no tax dollars from the county that we tax for goes for that Washburn sewer system.
Right. This would still be an eligible expense because it is within the county. And to your point, there are going to be a lot of things that we may not put tax dollars towards that are going to be allowable in this bill. So yeah, there's no question that this would fit the mold.
Because currently, all that's being funded through users' fees.
User fees, yes. Yep, you're absolutely right. So maintenance fees and user fees. So, you know, the flip side to that is if we don't do anything, and, well, we will have to do something, but if we don't use, if we don't put forth ARP money for those projects, we are going to have to either increase bills, or depending on the scope of the project, if we don't use reserves, and then have them pay us back through the user fees, then we would need to potentially bond for the scope of those projects. Ben is getting some ideas on how much those costs are for dredging the lagoon and getting those up to date. But those are, again, those are just
But we would maybe prioritize, I would think, like when we get to that point of what projects, whether or not we'd want to do something that was a private pay versus a county project that
Yeah, you can
giving tax relief for multiple residents, I was going to say, rather than the utility.
I think it's important projects, but I wish you'd double-check on that because, again, that's user fees paid for that system and not the taxpayers of Blackhawk County.
Yeah, regardless, the sewer system is within Blackhawk County, so I'm confident that it would qualify.
As would broadband or water, any kind of water projects then too, just because they're within the county?
Right. But, I mean, within water, we don't have a ton of water infrastructure. In speaking with
No, but we could probably improve some water structure, infrastructure. Just looking in general, there might be projects out there that, once we open a door for a storm, we have to take a look at everybody.
Yep.
But I think that project that I brought up on Cedar Terrace, we did some work out there. That was tax dollars that did that. And the whole county were, again, we don't spend that much.
Okay. Food for thought.
Food for thought.
This could present opportunities to address decades-old problems.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
The private dollars are going for that, yeah.
Still, we control purse strings.
Yes.
It's flow-through. And it's nice we get to decide where it flows to.
Next, we have supporting public health response.
That's power.
Salaries for public health employees dedicated to fighting COVID-19, contact tracing, services to contain and mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Those are going to be the vaccine clinics, the testing, the medical expenses, et cetera. And a lot of these are going to be reimbursements, again, with the salaries, the vaccine clinics that have already taken place, the testing, the medical expenses.
Excuse me, the monies that health departments spent on different things out there, like the massages and the trucks, or the food trucks and stuff like that, that's going to be paid for.
Those dollars came out of grant funds. And I would have to get a little bit more specific on that. Those were qualified expenses under those grant dollars. But I wouldn't want to double-dip those with that being funded by a grant previously. I wouldn't want to qualify those.
Was the grant specifically for those items or generalized healthcare?
It was generalized, but it did specifically say that, you know, morale boosting and helping the public health employees is an allowable expense within that grant.
So they're doing the massages, the food trucks, and things like that?
Yes, yep. So those all fall in with that grant there.
Similar to probably the Otto Schoitz one that we talked about today, that Nofisa brought, that was going to be for incentivizing people for vaccinations, very specific.
Very similar.
And just, this is, I think it's a letter that we all received, or we should have. I was going to say, I mentioned a grant that we did receive, a letter from the local 431 bargaining unit this week, that they wanted to talk with us or meet with us or something as far as the, one, I think of those comments that you had, the salaries for public health, not the salaries, but I think the benefits and salaries and that type of thing for essential workers. I don't know what they had in mind. I don't think they mentioned that.
Do they have public employees?
I don't know if they had any. I was going to say, if it was on behalf of others, because they spoke on behalf of our local, I know, 431.
But they don't represent any of our employees, is what you're saying, or we don't know?
We don't know. I was going to say, I don't know if we have any communications.
They don't have to represent.
No, I'm just, then I would say we'd have to be consistent with all the other unions in town, you know, Local 838 and all the others, you know what I'm saying? So that's quite a feat by itself right there.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I think Linda saw my next slide, because my next slide is premium pay for essential workers. That is up to thirteen dollars an hour, up to twenty-five thousand dollars per person. So employees or employers that had to be physically present on the job site and primarily lower moderate income. The key sectors pointed out were healthcare, food services, that does include grocery services, education, childcare, sanitation, and transit. So again, what they're indicating through their letter is we can also gift these grant funds to a third party for their employers to then do, to then do the same thing that we'd be able to do ourselves. So
What's considered lower moderate income?
They did not specify. So that would be something that we would have to look into.
Your chair going to follow?
A lot of this is gray area as well, and I think that's by design.
I think, and they were requesting a meeting with board or whatever, something like to say if that's something we need to respond to.
We should. I'll follow up.
With who?
It's Bob Waters, the president of the local 431, who asked for the meeting.
So I'll move into my hesitations. These dollars are meant primarily to look at capital projects that do not increase the tax levies moving forward into perpetual years. So my hesitations on looking through these projects and combing through these projects are, you know, if these projects do have operating costs that are going to move into the future, then we keep those in mind in saying that, you know, these grant funds are only available for X amount of years, and they will run out eventually. So I do want to hesitate on doing too many capital projects with operational costs. I don't want us to kind of be left holding the bag at the end of this and saying, well, now we have to jack our levy up quite a bit because we didn't have this thought moving forward. And I'm not saying that every project has to not have operational costs, but that's, I mean, I would really hesitate to look into those capital expenditures.
I think that's dependent
My thought on that would be if we're going to do that, we're going to be digging ourselves a hole in a way, because in the future, we're still going to have ongoing cost, and we don't want to add to the taxpayers' burdens right now or in the near future.
I agree with you.
So spend a one-time expense, and you're done with it.
We just have to scrutinize each
Yeah, I think so. I agree, Tom. I think you do have to look at it, because there could be some projects out there this gives us an opportunity to do that might be worthwhile for a tax-paying citizen to think like, hey, that is something we want to be a part of, not maybe a high cost.
You just have to keep in mind, this money isn't falling from the sky. It's taxpayers' money. And then just spend taxpayers' money, and then turn right around and raise taxes, probably wouldn't be fiscally responsible, especially in this day and age when everything's going up in cost. Last thing they need is to have their taxes increased because they're getting a program paid through another. It's complicated, and I think we just have to use common sense.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's just, yeah, taking a look at each project, like I said, and kind of weighing the costs and benefits of it, as well as the benefit to the community.
It's good that the timeframe is stretched out to December of 2024. I mean, it's not like we got
And that's not that far off.
Is there a requirement that half of it is spent before then, or a change?
No, the only thing that I saw was we don't, we can't fully spend all of our funds in the first half. So it is paid out in two portions. We do get half of it, I'll say, upfront, even though we're kind of pulling from the U.S. portal. But we don't have the full twenty-five point five million to pull from right away. So that is going to be made in two separate payments, so to speak.
Can we get, and based on this last slide, I think quarterly updates or quarterly meetings?
Yeah. So based on this next slide, this is what I would like from the board. I would like a little bit of direction on how you would refer to structure these work sessions. Would you prefer any department head that has ideas for these funds or projects, capital expenditures that they see coming, that's in their five-year plan, that may fit this mold, would you like them to essentially meet with me and then get to the podium, present it? Do you want them to come to me and then I present it to the full board? Do you want just
Option one, I think option one.
It's kind of where I
Well, we can have future work sessions and do it similar as budget sessions, where we schedule one or two departments if they're interested. Not all the departments are going to have projects.
Right.
And have them come before the board and give their spiel, just like a budget session. And that'll give the board a good idea on what, where they're coming from. And then when we get through that part, we look at other areas of the county.
Yeah, I think it's much like our budget. It's up to them to make the argument, good, bad, or different.
As long as they know what the rules are and what we're looking for as a board, so.
And then have quarterly meetings where the department heads can expect to
Quarterly meetings for what?
On updates, or where the department head meetings come in at the quarterly meeting and explain their desire for these funds or the project they have.
I like James's idea where they come into him and come in with their ideas, give him, and then he can disperse them at any time to us, and we can look them over and decide whether they're worthwhile and get back with the department heads, and have them come in before the public and explain it to the public. You know, that way.
But we should discuss it collectively as a group, rather than getting back to James one at a time.
I don't want department heads to spin their wheels.
I want to see what this supervisor says or does, and this one and that one's.
I agree with that.
I don't know if they'll spin their wheels, but I think if they have projects that they didn't qualify, then it's up to them to make the argument for it, and then it's us to make the decision.
But if I was a department head, I'd stay tuned into the board even if they were having a work session day and I wasn't on that. I'd still stay tuned, just to kind of get the gist of where they're going, so.
And I'm not sure if I want to limit it to just quarterly. Just have a little more flexibility to meet as the ideas come up.
Add it on to the end of the agenda every week.
Go every other week or something. You know, initially, James can set the foundation for us to have that discussion, but
And I think one of the areas, and I don't have my head around it all yet, either is housing was an area as well that can be invested in. And so one thing I thought would be a good idea is maybe to invite some of the leaders of the different social service agencies in here, so we all have a complete understanding of what their current expanded programs are too. So we're, know what holes maybe still exist, or what things are already being done. I know that both through CARES Act funding and through the American Rescue Plan funding, places like Operation Threshold and others have greatly expanded their traditional programs.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, realistically, we're going to have all hands on deck. And frankly, any idea that comes forth, we're going to want a little bit more input. And really, just all the information that we can gather collectively is just really going to better the conversation. And so I fully agree with you, yeah. And there's a lot of things that aren't going to be extremely clear in this bill. And we're just going to, we got to take it one project at a time.
I'm kind of looking on projects outside the county. Let's just say, for instance, if it's not on the radar or on the list of, say, Waterloo, why would the county be looking at it? Things like that. If it's not on their radar, why would we be putting it on ours? Especially when they're receiving more money than what the county's getting. So those are the areas that I'm going to pay close attention to. So during this process that we're going to go through, I'm sure we're going to hear where these cities are going with it, Cedar Falls, the Waterloo's. Because I'm curious to see where they're putting their money.
And I'm serving on ISAC's working group with other supervisors, other county elects across the state. And so we have our next meeting this coming Friday. And as ideas get flushed out in other counties, I'll be passing all that information along. I think that'll be helpful. And I also invite the public, you know, this is, as has been said, this is the federal tax dollars of the public, that we have the opportunity to invest in your community. And so if you've got ideas that you want us to look at, you know, we'll see if it fits into the parameters of what we can do. But I encourage the public to be reaching out to us on all this.
Yeah. And to Tom's point, there's going to be a lot of benefit to, you know, if any ideas come forth that are investing within the city limits, it, in my opinion, is going to be very worthwhile to have those conversations with those elected officials within the city, within those city limits. Because if, you know, housing, perfect example, if Waterloo is investing X amount of dollars in housing, and then we talk about housing, and we're two separate islands that are going to be putting forth money into housing, that may be too much money into housing, depending on what that looks like. And that's just one example of many. But my point is, anything that we do, I think that bringing as many people to the table and having those conversations is only going to be more efficient, more effective, and it's going to really better our conversations, so.
And on the other side, it might be opportunities to present for us to collaborate on these projects and make them stronger and more efficient and effective.
That's why I think the front-loading, the meetings part is important, because we have some of those discussions and relationships and that type of thing, and see where we want to go from that. I think I mentioned to you, emergency management was a group that we hadn't really thought about, you know, including in our elected officials and department heads. But she mentioned, you know, she was just going to start making lists, like maybe there were backup generators and things like that, that we should use as and things like that, that we should use as a county just for disasters and other things that come up and.
I want to just make sure that we keep in mind, or I will for sure, is um we represent the whole county.
Yes.
The Dunkertons, the Laports, the Hudson's, um Dewers, and Washburns, Evansdale, and so forth, so um we got to make sure that we're just not focusing in one area locally, we've got all of Black Hawk County.
Yeah, I think that was a, they were the example of that, looking at us as a county of what we need to do for disasters.
We need to be paying attention to everybody.
We got three and a half years to look at it.
And Colleen Sheppard mentioned she wasn't going to be able to participate today, but she was one too, when you talked about housing and looking, she was going to start looking at what kind of.
There'll be plenty of opportunity.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So so really, the first step is is going to calculate the lost revenue, calculate how much funds have been spent towards the mitigation of uh COVID-19. Once we get those dollars um essentially totaled, then that's, that's going to be really our first draw from these these funds, and so that's, again, that's, that's going to be something that um I will, I will continue every single year until the money runs out, letting you guys know exactly what those, what those costs are, exactly what the revenue losses are, um and and move forward with that flexible side, so.
Does any of those conditions you just mentioned, just now, uh will there be any bearing on the county's current status as far as condition that the county's in?
No. If. Can you repeat your question?
Well, I wouldn't say we're poor right now.
No.
Oh, no, we're.
So um you're basically looking, what, the year of twenty twenty?
Yeah, so s- as far as revenue loss goes, we're going to use our fiscal year nineteen as our base, because fiscal year nineteen was going to be our our very last full fiscal year prior to the pandemic, so that is going to be, that is going to be our base year. What they do is they incorporate this growth rate uh within every year that allows us to make sure that we are um uh pulling out as much lost revenue as possible that we can use for a flexible, for for flexible spending. Now, I will say, in FY twenty, we did add money to the general fund. That is because we did, we held off on a lot of capital projects, we were, we were holding off on our expenditures. So, yeah, to your point is, what I, what I wouldn't necessarily love to see is pulling out all this lost revenue, pulling out all um uh all the COVID costs, getting reimbursed, and then just sticking in into our reserves. I I think we have a very healthy reserve, uh and and this money is is really a a good opportunity to to invest in 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 capital, in capital projects.
Where is our lost revenue at?
Well, and that's, and that's exactly what I need to plug in, the the calculator uh that they sent out was sent out yesterday, uh and so that's what I'm going to be plugging in and and sending out to you guys, so um.
Because we really weren't too high at last time we made an estimate on that, we hadn't had a lot of loss.
Yeah, we, yeah, we didn't.
Unfortunately, and I'd like to, I mean, we'd all like to see us take advantage of that twenty-five million for taxpayers
Interest.
benefit as much as we can, so I'd hate to leave anything on the table that we couldn't do.
You know, I thought about that grant, about the interest of Rita and the department, but the only thing I would question on there is ten years ago, we lost interest big time, so it wasn't due to COVID, this time it could have been, probably was.
Well, and
But that might be an area.
And and that would be, I mean, it's, from from what I've read, it is, it is qualified under this lost revenue because it does, it does.
And those have rebounded, but they're not back anywhere near to where they were, correct?
Not even close, yeah.
Nothing bounced.
Nothing, yeah.
And that's something that'll go on for the next couple of years, I think, because the Fed is purposely keeping the interest rates low right now, um it seems that they will be.
Yeah, and FY twenty-nine was a good year for rates, so.
Okay. So I think it's good that we're doing this early, like I say, because we'd like to have those projects kind of in line, I would think so, and when we can, you benefit from year to year, we can just do them instead of having to start over.
I think it's an exciting opportunity for our community.
Yeah.
All right. Item number eleven. Any reports or information from the board?
This Saturday, the Honor Flight will be selling flags at all the local Hy-Vee's, the flags that were left over from the Field of Honor to support the Honor Flight, and we got to go as of last Friday for September twenty-second for our next Honor Flight, and we are short service people to go on the flight. Uh if so, if anyone was in the service between nineteen forty-two to nineteen seventy-five, they're eligible to go on the flight September twenty-second. Applications are available here at the courthouse, online at uh www.honorflight, Cedar Valley Honor Flight dot org, or at any of the local clubs, veterans clubs.
I'm eligible.
I'm eligible. You're el- you've been eligible.
I missed it.
I'll just share, we had our first um in-person meeting of the Northeast Iowa Area Hazmat Response Group um in about a year, and so it's good to see um our colleagues from other counties in person, and there are no major hazmat incidents the last quarter.
And today, the Exchange Club at noon will be honoring the Waterloo Police Officer of the Day and the Waterloo, or Police Officer of the Year and the Waterloo Reserve Officer of the Year.
The Year.
Of the Year, not the Day.
That exchange bar.
The exchange bar tomorrow.
Anything else, Board? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed, say no.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.